We begin with the Pledge of the Flag.
Pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
And to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All in silence, please. Thank you. Roll call.
Mr. Haas?
Here.
Ms. Houck?
Here.
Mr. Kelleher?
Here.
Mr. Perry?
Here.
Ms. Sedman?
Here.
Mr. Schnee?
Present.
Mr. Urban?
Here.
Mr. Vog?
Here.
Ms. Wakus?
Present.
Mr. McGinley?
Present.
Ten present and Mr. Braminski's on the phone.
Mr. Braminski's on the phone. We need a motion in regards to Mr. Braminski participating by phone.
So moved.
Mr. Haas?
Second.
Second by Ms. Houck. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any abstentions? Any in opposition? Unheard. Mr. Braminski's on the phone and he will be participating on the phone. Recognizations and proclamations. We do not have any for this evening. Additions and deletions to the voting session agenda, please. Motion to adopt the voting session. Mr. Kelleher?
Second.
Second. Ms. Sedman or Ms. Wakus?
Ms. Sedman.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any in opposition? Any abstentions? None heard. Moving down to public comment on voting session items. Solow. Voting session items.
Consider all business of voting session items?
We don't have anything on the all business this evening. Anyone else? Thank you. Moving down to the motion to approve the minutes from October 23rd.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Schnee. Ms. Sedman. On the question. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any in opposition? Any abstentions? Abstain, Mr. Urban or in opposition?
No.
Votes no? We have ten one. Motion carries. Moving down to first agenda item under the county manager. Motion to adopt resolution to approve the policy regarding investments of Luzerne County funds.
So moved.
Mr. Kelleher?
Excuse me?
Yes, sir.
I'm sorry to interrupt, but I should be abstaining on that motion to approve the minutes of the last meeting. I was not there.
Okay, we'll record it as abstain then, Mr. Braminski.
Thank you.
Yep. Mr. Kelleher made the motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Ms. Wakus? On the question. Yes, Ms. Houck.
On the question. So who devised this policy?
This policy was devised by Budget Finance with PFM, our financial advisors.
Okay. And would this not have come through the Budget Finance and Audit Committee before it came to the council? Wouldn't that be the normal procedure for something?
I don't believe that we, the Budget Finance Committee involves with investments, but...
Well, it's a financial policy.
I still don't believe it involves investment for that committee, but that's my choice. My thought.
Okay. Investments are finance. I just question the procedure about how it came. I don't think we really had too much discussion on this. I mean, we are...
Was that the work session last time?
I know, and I was here.
Yes.
Right. And there was not a lot of discussion about it.
And there was on a work session prior to that, and we said it would be reviewed by PFM, and it was. And some recommendations were added to it and highlighted.
Okay.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Braminski?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Houck?
Yes.
Mr. Kelleher?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Sedman?
Yes.
Mr. Schnee?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yeah, with reservation, I think things like this should go through a committee. That's why we have committees in place and not just a couple of street from the manager's office to the work session. He's not a member of the legislative branch of government. He's the administrative branch of government.
And what's your vote, Mr. Urban?
Yeah, I said with reservation.
Thank you.
Mr. Vog?
Yes.
Ms. Wakus?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes. Thank you. Motion to adopt resolution requesting a multimodal transportation fund grant from Pennsylvania Department of Transportation. We have a motion.
So moved.
Ms. Wakus, do we have a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Perry. On the question.
Yeah, on the question.
Yes.
I, I'm... Although I'm in favor of applying for the grant, I think you're looking at the wrong funding source, i.e. Luzerne County, to fund the $126,000 from Liquid Fuels. Number one, if this is for bus stops down in Hanover Industrial Park, why aren't you going to LCTA who runs the buses? They have an excess of funds, from what I've heard and what I've seen in the last several years, in their, on hand, that they can use. Number two, the bus stops that they currently own throughout the county, they do advertising, and they get revenues from those bus stops. I know they were using Lamar, I believe it was, for quite some time, contract to put ads up in those bus stops. So we're going to use county road and bridge money, money that should be used to fix roads, holes in roads and fixed bridges, to put up bus stops. I think we went to the wrong agency to get that money. I don't think you've even tried to go over to LCTA to get them to fund this. Secondly, I don't know if you went to Hanover Township and tried to get them to fund it from their Liquid Fuels money, because they get a heck of a lot more than we do when it comes to the amount of money that they get per square mile or road. So I'm not going to support this on those grounds that you go into the wrong funding sources. You're taking money from the county that desperately needs money to fix roads and bridges instead of going to other agencies that I think are more appropriate for the match.
Anyone else?
Yes.
Mr. Braminski and then Mr. Schnee. Mr. Braminski, you're up.
Yes, thank you. Over the past three weeks, I've got four phone calls and one from the outside and three from inside the LCTA. One of the complaints that I got from an outside person was that apparently there's a bus route that runs into Pittston now, and it goes to a certain point. But the caller complained that the bus was parked, the doors were locked, and the driver went into the restaurant for, in fact, he said the Majestic, for a half hour to 45 minutes. I don't think that's proper, and I think it should be corrected. And another complaint that I received was from within the LCTA itself, that the inspections are not done thoroughly on the buses, and some of them are coming in late at night, 1 o'clock in the morning, and I guess when they're finishing up. And they're just putting stickers on them without an actual inspection. I think that should be brought to the attention of the LCTA, and that it should be looked into.
Mr. Schnee?
Thank you.
What kind of funding do they have? Do they have enough funding that we could draw out of their account?
LCTA?
Yeah.
Well, the LCTA will be here because they're asking for their match every year. So you'll have an opportunity to speak with the executive director, Mr. Gavlick.
Can we possibly table this?
They can do anything anybody wishes.
If I may, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I would recommend we do not table it based upon the fact that this has to be in by November 15th, which is two days from now. If you will see the actual, the actual resolution, you'll notice that we're asking for the grant of $421,381. If council wants to put in there that we would later determine the amount of the match or where those matches comes from, that's fine with me. The county administration said we would be putting in $126,000 from Liquid Fuels funds if we get the grant. So that's, we're taking two steps down the road here. But if council would approve the grant, allow...
Grant application.
Allow grant application, allow us to apply, I have no issue coming back to talking to LCTA about funding that $126,000 if we do actually, if we do actually are able to receive it. Number two is I do agree with Mr. Urban that if we do put up a bus stop area, those bus, those funding should come to Luzerne County in terms of advertisements, and that is something that we would fully take advantage of. But this is more for the curbing and the pedestrian access for those, for those particular areas. Once again, we're talking about the Hanover Industrial Park here. Everybody knows what we've done there. We're talking about incredible amount of jobs that are coming through there at this time. So this is an opportunity for the county, and these are county roads, unfortunately, still, that we have. So this is just allowing us to apply for the grant. If council would approve this, allowing us to apply for the grant, we can later determine how we're going to find the matching funds. And if council wants to put a proviso in there that I have to come back to council if we are awarded about, finding the $126,000, that's fine. Just allow us to apply for it so we can get in the ballgame.
Mr. Schnee, want to make a motion, make an amendment?
First, I'd like to say, like, I don't think anybody here will deny the development that has happened in Hanover Industrial Park. I mean, the place, they did a tremendous job there, and I'm sure the question here is, I'd actually agree with Mr. Urban. I'd like to see the money come out of that fund and a fund that's badly needed in Luzerne County. So if we could make a motion that we apply for the funds and...
To amend, to look for the funding match from the LCTA?
Yeah.
Mr. Schnee makes that motion. Do we have a second? Mr. Kelleher? Yes.
As I read the resolution, it only says we're applying for the grant for the 400 and some thousand. There is no mention of the funds.
No, that's, I'm providing that as background information for council. So when we do receive, I want to be honest with everybody.
I mean, do you think it needs a proviso since it's not mentioned in there at all?
I don't believe it really needs to, but it's up to county council. If you feel more comfortable knowing that's in there. First off, I've applied for a bunch of grants and I lost a lot of grants. So, you know, so, but we've got some too. So let me first try to win this grant, and then if we do win the grant, I'll come back to county council and say, hey, listen, good news. We got a $421,000 grant. Where do you want me to take the match from? Do you want me to take it from Liquid Fuels? Do you want me to take it, do you want me to go to LCTA? You want me to go to the reserve? You want to do something else with it? Maybe we sold something? I'm okay with any of those things. I'm telling you, it would be my administration's position that we would just take it from Liquid Fuels at the time, because I have to, I'm trying to be honest with council to where we, that's what we've done in the past. If councils are interested in that, so be it. But the whole idea behind us is to let us apply for the, let us apply for the grant.
Yeah, if I could, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I think based on what everything said, what Steve said, I think everybody agrees with that, that we desperately need to put as much money possible into roads. Bob's idea is a good one as well, and we don't want to handicap or jeopardize the grant process either.
Right.
So could we, at the very end now, therefore, be it resolved? Council approves the request of submission contingent upon the manager seeking out revenue sources apart from the general fund and reporting to council before dispersment. How is that?
Yeah, that's a good opportunity.
Dave, I'm not an attorney, but...
I'll second.
Just because we...
We have one motion on the floor. A motion and a second. So do you want to make that your motion?
Yes.
What Mr. Haas read?
Yes.
So Mr. Schnee makes that as a motion. Mr. Kelleher, you second that, correct? Are we fine with that? Mr. Haas?
Yes.
I still have a question.
Yes.
I drove in there today. We don't own that road as far as I'm concerned, from the main drag industrial park up to Chewy. I don't know of any dedication that we've assumed responsibility for that road network. I, that should come before council, before we take any roads.
We're not taking any roads.
Well, you're improving, what road are you improving? What road is this going to go on?
Mr. Plesch, which road is this?
Going up the hill to Chewy?
It's not, it's not the private road. Is Mr. Plesch here?
Yeah, he's standing, he's back there.
Larry, Larry, on the multimodal, on the multi-road, which is the road that we're talking about specifically that with regard...
New Commerce Road.
Which is a county road?
Yes.
That's the main road going through, not the side road going up the hill.
No, that's...
New Commerce Road is the main road in that industrial park.
From the bottom to the top, a main street that goes up all the way to the...
All right, but not, not the road going up through Chewy?
No.
We got enough promise of our own roads.
All right.
That's our own road. This is, this is the access road that their two driveways come through. The two roads that go out to them are our own, no.
All right, and we're not going to have any plans to take that road over. We don't have any plans to take that road over either.
No.
All right.
That's the mine owners.
All right. Well, things happen around here that, you know, once we own things, and we're from maintaining and repairing them after they're built.
That's when the commission...
No, 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 that's now. That's now because you've got a manager that can do whatever he wants. Commissioners used to vote, mister's voted no to take up a Bobby Miracles roads in his industrial park. Remember that. Mary Ann and I know, know that one. That'd be another 800,000 you'd be spending a year to maintain.
Well, we have an amendment. That's been motion and seconded. Roll call on the amendment.
Well, on the question?
Yes.
And I'm not sure if this is on the amendment or on the, on the whole idea.
Neither one.
Is this project, is this listed anywhere, like on the capital projects list, or do we have this?
It isn't listed as a capital project because there's no funds that we're allocating for it at this time.
So it's not on any list anywhere?
Correct.
This is like another project added onto a list of capital projects?
Correct. We're seeking, there's a grant option, there's an opportunity for a grant. So we went through our roads, we saw an opportunity for a grant, we contacted PennDOT. We had the most successful, when we have it, we include multimodal, which was, which is something to do besides just driving. So this is obviously the mass transportation. If you look at Bysels Road in Butler Township that we just got about half a million dollars for, it was the inclusion of the bike lane in there. That puts us over the top with regard to PennDOT on that. So we identified this particular project as a, as an option for the county that we would have to be able to be able to fix for $400,000. I think it's a good opportunity to apply for a grant. If council doesn't want to apply for this grant, we don't have to.
Well, okay, but here's, and this goes back to my question of probably late August, which was when we got the capital projects, or the capital plan, and all those projects were listed, the only projects that were listed were those that there was actually going to be funding for. And if some of you might remember, I asked the question about, aren't there other projects? Like, isn't there a wish list somewhere of projects that we could do? And I was told, we don't do that. But apparently there's a wish list somewhere, because one of the projects off that wish list is right here. And now that you have an opportunity to apply for funding, we're going to pursue it. That's fine. But I'd like to see the whole wish list so we could all take a look at that, at that list. Maybe there are things that, you know, there are other grants that we could apply for as well. I think we're getting a limited picture of what's, what needs to be done. That's my, I guess, my comment and, you know, my question. Thank you for the answer. But I think that we need to see a little more information, not necessarily about this. I think we have a lot of information about this, but I'd like to see the rest of the wish list. Thank you.
Anyone else? Roll call on the amendment, please.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Houck?
Yes.
Mr. Kelleher?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Sedman?
Yes.
Mr. Schnee?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Vog?
Yes.
Ms. Wakus?
Yes.
Mr. Braminski?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Unanimous. And now we go back to motion to adopt a resolution requesting multimodal transportation fund grant. And then PennDOT, Ms. Wakus made the motion. Mr. Perry seconded that. Roll call, please.
Ms. Houck?
Yes.
Mr. Kelleher?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Sedman?
Yes.
Mr. Schnee?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Vog?
Yes.
Ms. Wakus?
Yes.
Mr. Braminski?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes. Thank you. Moving onward to the backside. County council, motion regarding the Act 13 funds in committee.
So moved. Second.
Mr. Schnee and Mr. Vog. On the question, Ms. Wakus?
Yes. This, and, and Harry, I think you would agree, this, this is the procedure we talked about. This is laying out the new plan for awarding the funds. And I think it's wonderful, and I'm glad the committee was able to work together on this and create a document and hope will be easy to use, or easier to use, and, and the process will work smoothly. And as Mr. Haas and I discussed, in the future, we're going to bring up the plan, a new plan. I don't know, Harry, maybe we shouldn't call it a plan, a, an idea for dispersing some of the funds that have been remaining for the project that's dear to all of our hearts, which is planting along the river side. And also some kind of fund set up for abatement of insects, whether they be gypsy moth, wood boring, whatever, so that if the funds are requested in the future, they can be tapped to give some help to some of the municipalities who are really strapped for money, who have nothing, no resources to fight this. So we just want you to know that we'll be discussing this in the future, probably in the new year.
Mr. Haas, you have?
No, I agree with Sharon.
Okay. So, Mr. Schnee, you made the motion. Mr. Vog seconded. You have a procedure that was passed by the council that came through the committee. And Mr. Haas provided an email, correct, Mr. Haas?
Yeah, just using the format provided that Sharon developed. And I was just basically writing down what we discussed as council in large few weeks ago.
And... Mr. Haas, if you can read that, I think, am I correct in saying you have a earmark of 4982 something for River Common?
Yep, 38 cents.
What is it?
And 38 cents.
38 cents? 4982, 38 cents?
Yeah, I just took the difference. I mean, the, obviously, the Act 13 grants are 25,000, gypsy moth slash other pest control, 14,000. And I put the remainder towards River Common and, of course. Maybe it's debate, I don't have an issue with that either.
And that's what, Mr. Schnee, that's your motion?
Can I just make a comment?
Go ahead.
Just so everyone knows, 25,000, so we limited it to 5,000 per project with a mandatory match. So, I mean, I like this. We're still helping five municipalities out there. So I'm completely on board.
Okay. The procedure that's in place has a timeline. So we'd have to correct the timeline, right? Mr. Haas?
Um, yes, whatever, whatever's written there, correct.
Is that the timeline on Agenda Page 25?
Looks like it to me.
Is that the one?
That's it.
So do you want to add something about the timeline, Mr. Haas?
Whatever, whatever the council sees appropriate. Obviously, Sharon's going to be doing the heavy lifting with this stuff, so we want to make sure it's streamlined for her.
Do we want to start December 1 instead of the timeline?
I mean, what... I'm just the facilitator, I mean, whatever's appropriate.
What's here now is, is passed.
Yes.
So should we pick it up from December 1?
I think December 1 is fine. Harry, do you agree?
Absolutely.
Okay. Everybody okay with that, December 1?
Yep.
So a motion to follow the recommendation that Mr. Haas has provided. Mr. Schnee, and seconded by Mr. Vog, and the timeline would be beginning with December 1. Correct?
Yes. So I have a question.
Go ahead.
So December 1st, we're deciding the amount of funds, or we're, that's the deadline for applications, or we're starting to accept up? I mean, what?
Start with applications. That would be the start of the applications.
So now we're, we're essentially going to be closer to two months behind.
Yes.
September, three months. September 1st deadline on this timeline on Page 25 will be December?
Yeah, December 1.
And then the application submission deadline would be January 1st?
I think everything else you just moved two months ahead, whatever, whatever we see there.
You want to make it January 15th, so January 1st? I mean, I, I'm fine with whatever you think is reasonable.
Could have discussed this earlier, but...
You should start accepting applications January 1st, and then the deadline would be February 1st.
We could certainly do that unless...
January 1st, people comfortable with that?
Yeah.
Yes.
As written, the timeline is, as written, however, pushing every date forward by the appropriate time, about three months.
Okay.
From that point.
Beginning January 1 and move it forward.
If that requires a motion, I can certainly make that motion, Mr. Chair.
That's four months.
Yes.
We're pushing everything forward.
Pushing four, four months.
So we have a motion about the finances, and now we have part of that motion that the January 1st would be the start of the procedure instead of September 1, correct?
That's right.
Everybody?
Yes.
Mr. Schnee?
Yes.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Kelleher?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Sedman?
Yes.
Mr. Schnee?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Vog?
Yes.
Ms. Wakus?
Yes.
Mr. Braminski?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Houck?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Unanimous. Okay, public comment? On any issue? Mr. Newman?
I don't have a request in, but I would like to make a comment on the transportation situation.
Certainly, go to the podium, please.
John Newman of Nanticoast, Pennsylvania. I'd like to publicly thank the Luzerne County Transportation Authority for putting on additional buses to run evening hours. I know there are three to five people who work at Price Chopper in Edwardsville that use the buses primarily for access and return home. They put the additional stops in for the Plymouth Bus at Kingston Corners and Kmart. These people work at Price Chopper, and every night, somewhere around 9:30, they walk from Price Chopper to Kmart to get the bus. Is there any way council can get the authority to put the stop in at Price Chopper to accommodate maybe, maybe more than three to five people? I don't know. But they walk in the rain, sometimes I get a call and I will go and pick them up so they don't have to walk in the rain or the snow. It's a reasonable request. Can anything be done about it? And, and again, I'm thanking the, the authority for putting those buses on. And since you're talking about the motion, or that the industrial park, there are going to be a lot of people in there using buses. And when the new ones go in from Kojescos Street to Dundee Crossroad, there's going to be a lot more jobs down there and a lot more people using the bus. So I'd like to make that request. I, I hope you can follow through on that.
Mr. Solow.
To further John's comment, which is very poignant, for one, I'm probably the only person in the room who, besides John, uses a bus. You know, the, we really want to thank Norm for instituting the evening service. I don't know how it was funded, but I can tell you for a fact that this request from the citizenry for evening service has been going on for over 20 years, 20 years, not 20 minutes. So it was roundly shot down in the past. So those of us who have taken ourselves off the road really depend on that. And one of the questions I have regarding that is, how far is the walk from these companies that are going to be provided service to the actual bus stop? On civilization, companies pay for this kind of thing, and it goes to their door. It makes little sense to me, if it's true, what I've heard from other riders, that it's a long haul from their place of employment to a place where the bus can actually pick them up. Now, I understand there's state limitations about using public roads instead of private ones to pick one, to pick people up. I think there's got to be a workaround for that kind of issue. But, you know, who's going, to be honest, who's going to take a bus if they walk, walk a couple hundred yards in, in the weather we're now experiencing? I also gratify that evidently council has chosen to maintain transparency by eliminating old business. I guess that's a really neat way to eliminate the need for response to citizenry questions. That's the way things go. That's the way things go. With regard to something that, you know, council seems to continue, along with the administration, to bypass the committee system. And if you're going to do that repeatedly, as you have been, why not just eliminate them? And if you're not going to answer questions in the public, eliminate that section formally. And if you're going to have hearings and then just immediately vote on them, basically tuning, putting in earplugs from people's comments, then why even have public hearings? Just go to a vote. You know, people see through this stuff. Might as well, you know, be honest about it and say, we want to do this, and just don't. Just make it public so everybody's clear about it. With regard to, and there goes the bell. Thank you, Tinker Bell. So I can't get a laugh to save my butt here, Karen. So there's plenty more, but we'll cover them later. But for the few of you who are wide awake, thank you very much for pointing some of these things out. And you know who you are.
Anyone else in the public? Yes?
I have a question. When we change those dates on the application on Page twenty-nine of thirty-three, do you have to change those dates as well, I think?
Yeah. Anyone else? Motion adjourned? Mr. Kellerer? Ms. Wacus, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
We will go to the work session after we complete the work session part before we get into the budget. We will take a short break there. Allow everybody to catch their breath and visit the lavatory if necessary. So we'll call this work session order. Roll call, please.
Mr. Braminski?
Here.
Mr. Haas?
Here.
Ms. Hou?
Here.
Mr. Kellerer?
Here.
Mr. Perry?
Here.
Ms. Sedman?
Here.
Mr. Snee?
Present.
Mr. Urban?
Here.
Mr. Bo?
Here.
Ms. Wacus?
Present.
Mr. McGinley?
Present. additions or deletions of work session agenda? Yes?
I sent an email a week ago asking to have an item added to the agenda, and it's not on it, so I'd like to add it at this time. And it was a discussion of the supervision of financial personnel throughout the county. I would also like to request an item to discuss the documents that were requested for the children and youth audit. They were, we were assured last week by the administration that they would be sent to us, and they were not sent to us. So maybe we could have a discussion on that, too. And, well, there's another one that we can talk about during the division report, so that doesn't need to be added. But I would like those two items added, please.
Well, the one item about the supervision, Mr. Swets is not here because he has a health issue. So I felt it would be best for him to be here in order to participate in that discussion. So that's why it was not added. And the second item was about your documents.
Requested documents?
I think the manager will be addressing that in your division reports.
Sure, if you like.
Absolutely. So we will make sure that that's part of your manager's report.
Okay.
Okay? And when Mr. Swets returns, we will have that discussion.
I'm not sure it's really up to Mr. Swets, but if you want to wait until then...
I understand that, but what I'm saying is, I think that Mr. Swets should be here to participate in that discussion, obviously. He's a major part of that. Want to make that motion and get a second and vote on? Fine.
You want to make it?
Yeah, I think it's relevant to talk about.
Yeah.
It deals with our financial picture.
Yeah.
So I would second Ms. Hou.
Okay.
Change the agenda.
Another question? All in favor of adding that to the agenda?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. We'll add it. Number six.
Linda, it's the supervision of administrative...
Of financial personnel throughout the county.
Okay. Mr. Manager?
Sure, we'll take a look at the division reports briefly. I'll build myself to any questions regarding this. Yes, we sat down with our auditors from the presentation last week. We received some of the letters from children and youth. I will be happy to provide those to County Council. We did not receive all the information we requested. Our auditor, specifically Ms. Ritter from Mayor Dusel, specifically refused to provide us with her work documents, which are some of the documents that the county requested from last time. This was part of the contract that they have to provide us with those documents. So we will be following up with that. But I will be happy to provide the documents we do have to County Council. I didn't want to do it in piecemeal format, but I'll be happy to provide what I have at this time.
Well, actually, if I could just ask specifically, she had a document that she handed to me, and she said that that was, that should have been available to council. And so I thought we were, we were told at the meeting that there was no problem with us getting that.
I'm not sure what document you're talking about.
It was the document of her findings, their findings. So if you looked at the children and youth audit that was sent when I requested a copy of that audit several months ago, remember I said at the time, and I think it was at the meeting at LCC, that it was a very simple audit. It was kind of vague, actually. And there were no findings anywhere on it. And I asked for that. And that was the document that she was reading from last week when we met. And you said you'd provide it.
I'm not sure what document you're talking about, Ms. Hou, but I'll be happy to review it.
The document with the findings from...
You said you have the document.
I don't have it.
She gave it back.
No, she had the...
She handed it to me, and I read...
The auditor had the document.
And she said that the county's in possession of that document.
Okay. I'm not aware of that, but whatever we have, I'll be happy to provide to County Council. I didn't want to do it piecemeal because we did ask, you asked for numerous documents. Some of those documents...
I asked for two things. I asked for the one that she handed me that I read from. And the other thing I asked for was a copy of what she has in written documentation.
No, you asked for all the supporting documents regarding those documents as well.
But that's part of the audit.
So I'll be happy to provide whatever we have. And I'll get that to County Council tomorrow.
Tomorrow?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Urban?
This is on this Page one of seventy-seven, okay? First one's under Human Services. And I guess this gets down to the audit. You know, one of the names that I haven't heard anything from throughout this whole audit process is Ms. Hill. Now, Ms. Hill was hired as the manager of managers. She's in charge of Human Services, and one of her agencies is Children and Youth. You know, and I hope she knows what's going on in her agency. And I hope she should be able to explain the financing issues in Children and Youth because she's the manager of that manager. I mean, that's her sole job, is to manage managers. You know, and I haven't heard a thing from her throughout this process. And I hope she's getting a good education on what's going on. I didn't vote for her because I didn't think she had the qualifications to run that department. And I think things are starting to show me that I made the right decision because of the issues in the children and youth audit. That's number one. Number two, I just have some questions regarding the election, too. Some people came to me and told me that the batteries in those new equipment didn't last too long, and they have to actually plug them in to keep the batteries charged. I think they're supposed to have a battery life of twenty hours or so, but they weren't working. And some of them also complained about the stylus pens that are used to sign your name in the book, that they weren't the best type of pen, that stylus, you could probably get a better stylus that would help you identify the signatures a little bit more easily. Those two issues. And then the other issue is, you know, we hear all this issue across the country, down in Georgia particularly, about ballots and ballots not counting, you know. And every year in Luzern County, there are ballots that come in after the five o'clock deadline on Friday. That's what the law says in this state, that your ballot's not in the voter services by five o'clock, it doesn't count. Now, I don't think we've ever gone back to the people whose ballot didn't count and told them their ballot didn't count and told them their ballot that didn't count because it wasn't received in time. So two things I would like to see done. Number one is that those people be notified that their ballot came in after five o'clock Friday, and their ballot did not count. Number two, go to the state and lobby the state legislature to change that law to allow ballots to come into the voter services until the end of the election on Tuesday. I think that's only fair to the voters to make sure that every vote that's cast in this Commonwealth counts. So those are two requests that I'm making to the administration to do.
Anything else, Mr. Manager, on the division reports?
No, we have a lengthy agenda tonight. But if any council members, any questions? Be happy to follow up.
If I could, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I think just regarding the election machines, the feedback I got, too, is that the poll works are very successful for the most part. The cord, the stylus attaching machine was a little short, and some of the pollers needed extension cords. It was just not too much, just some very minor feedback. But regarding what Steve said about children and youth, you know, I don't think we can necessarily peg Ms. Hill for five years of unaccountability for some very significant funds. I think if anything, we need to look at the auditors and see, how do you drop the ball on something like that? It's a real embarrassment.
I guess what I looked at is, I looked at the 2016 audit. I didn't notice any discrepancies in that. So between 2016 and 2018, there's all these discrepancies in children and youth as far as financing. So I've got to go back to a point in time. At the point in time in 2016, there was no issue.
You have to go back to really 2008 because that's when the $5 million was actually found.
I don't go back there.
You don't go back there?
You need all the back.
I don't go back.
That's when you were there.
I wasn't there. I was in the...
Yeah, you were there.
I think we have to have a full...
I didn't vote for that majority guy like you.
Voting no for everything.
Listen, I think we need...
Not no.
I think we need a full and complete analysis of the children and youth, let's be honest. All the way back from 2008, all the way to the front, all the way to the present. There was, one audit says we owe them $5 million. Another audit says that they owe us $6 million. It's got to be done over again. We're bringing in outside auditors to review it again with us.
I told Ms. Peddwell, per the contract with previous auditors, will they be fitting the bill for that, for having the second look taken? Because as far as I'm concerned, they're in breach of contract.
Well, we have to find the contracts. We have to make sure that they're on contract.
Find the contract, of course.
Could I just ask, have you seen the document that she said was signed by management?
I have never seen that letter.
Okay. Did you ask for it?
I did.
Okay. Thank you.
She said that those were work documents, and she will not provide those, work product, she won't provide those.
Well, she said she had more than one. She said she had had it signed in multiple years. So I would just be curious to see who signed it.
If you're in contact with her, if you could have her say, to send it to us? Because I specifically asked her to send it to us, and she refused to do so. So we're going to be in the process of reviewing that again and seeing how to get these work product documents of our own, of our own information. Maybe we have the information somewhere, but I think that's maybe the best way to go about it.
And...
Were they paid in full for the audit?
They were. That's how we got the letter. If you recall, she refused to send us the findings letter. This was until we were able to repay in full.
Mr. Peddly, doesn't she have a boss that we... I mean, the company is not her company, is it?
It isn't.
So isn't there a possibility that you write to the boss and say, the person we have the contract with, the auditor, blah, 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 refuses to give us the findings, which we have requested and are supposed to be part of? I mean, she can't make those decisions alone. Or if she does, she's not following protocol.
We've already, I refer the mayor to solicitor's office for their full and complete review and look at the contract to see how we go about getting these documents. If, listen, maybe the documents are in the county's possession somewhere, but I prefer to have it all from one source.
I have a lot of documents to review.
And if you remember way back when we first came in as Home Rule, we asked the previous auditor, who had been hired and had a contract for their work papers. And they told us the same thing, no. So that's, I guess, standard in the practice of accounting, auditing. Unfortunately, some of that stuff is very important, and it's very difficult to pick up an audit if you don't have that work information.
Because that seems strange. Because I'm on a lot of boards where things get audited and we get copies of the audit.
You get copies of the audit, but not the work papers. Not the work papers. And to Mr. Urban's point, I spoke with the auditors that were here ten, twelve years ago. And this was something that was pointed out ten or twelve years ago, this due-to-from situation. And it has been an ongoing issue for many years. And this year, it came to a head. But it's not something that just all of a sudden turned up. It's something that's been going on for many, many years.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I agree a hundred percent with Mr. Haas's comments about blaming Ms. Hill. And I just want to let Ms. Hill know that, and I apologize for not rebutting that, that's not the feeling of the rest of council here. That's Mr. Urban's opinion himself.
That is...
And I apologize.
You don't have to apologize to me.
That I didn't rebut that.
You don't have to apologize to me.
No, I'm not apologizing. I'm apologizing that I didn't rebut it.
You can apologize to her all you want.
Ambush the poor girl. You made an accusation that went back to 2008. She wasn't even here.
She's in charge of children and youth and has been for the last two years.
Yes, she is.
Right. And the audit was late this year.
Goes back to 2008.
Well, it wasn't, we're not talking about 2008.
When you were in charge.
Audit now.
When you were in charge.
No, I think I have it wrong.
You were a twelve-year commissioner.
That's right. I was.
When you were in charge.
And I liked being a twelve-year commissioner.
When you were in charge.
I think maybe the last two years I was in charge with Mary Ann.
All I'm saying...
Equal.
If you have trouble with personnel, there's a time and a place. Not ambushing them out of public...
I'm not ambushing anybody.
Yes, you did.
I'm stating a fact. I'm stating a fact.
Yes, you did. And I apologize for her not rebutting.
Ms. Hill is in charge of children and youth, and the audits of children and youth were late this year, systemically late, that they caused the overall audit of the county to be months late. And she's responsible for rectifying that.
So it doesn't happen again?
I think there's a shared responsibility there among several parties. Going to number two, we have discussion regarding the resolution authorizing the county manager to execute agreement with MCM Consulting Group for the P-25 Phase II Digital Radio System Project Management. Mr. Rosa Krantz.
Tough act to follow there.
Okay.
Hopefully glad to be here.
You're the manager.
Members of council, good to see you again. We have on the agenda on the work session, a resolution authorizing the county manager to execute an agreement with MCM Consulting Group for a professional services agreement. If you recall, back on August 14th, when we were here, we discussed release of an RFP and getting the ball rolling on this project. With this, it is for a scope of services will cover complete radio system project management up to RFP award, including planning, coordination, meeting attendance, acquisition, development of a request for proposals, funding plan assistance, grant writing assistance, and complete technical design of the newly recommended VHF IP-based P-25 multi-zone simulcast radio system. So for the financing on this, one of the main reasons why we're bringing it to council is it's for $380,357. Of that, $114,000 is earmarked and encumbered out of 911 funding and the current bond allocation out of the 194 fund it's programmed into there. The final balance due, we negotiated the contract to where it's unloaded, where the final balance will be $266,250 due approximately November or December of next year. So we have to discuss the future borrowing or reallocation of 194 funding or potential budget allocation source for that final payment in November or December of next year.
Questions?
So, Ms. Rosa Krantz, first of all, welcome. Good to see you.
Thank you.
So this is totally coming from Fund 194, from Act 194 funds?
No.
Or are we looking at some of this portion from the general fund or some other source?
General fund or the reserve. The $266,000 balance will be due November, December of next year.
Is that written into the...
Into the contract?
Yeah. I don't think that's quite my question. Does it have, I guess, really, does it have to come from that source? If we find alternative sourcing?
No.
So it doesn't have to come from the general fund? We can have that option?
Correct.
Okay. I know there's statutes about this kind of stuff.
We owe them money, it can come from any source. I mean, so it could come from, if the council decides to do a borrowing in 2020, that can be something that, this can be included into that portion of it. It could come from their current reserve, it could come from a reserve in 2019, it could come from the general fund in 2019, it could come from a grant that we're able to do for this particular project. But Luzern County 911 is only able to cover the first $114,000. $114,000. The county will have to come up with the other portion of it through some format, whether that be capital, the capital investments, or some along those.
Okay. So I did, I don't want to preempt you there, Fred, unless you have a lot more presentation to give, but page eight of the contract, or at least page eight on our agenda pack, council, it's 31 out of 177, it has the funding there. And like I said, I don't want to steer you under threat if you have to speak more about that.
No, I'm ready for questions. So page 31...
If I could, Mr. Chair.
Of 177 on the agenda?
Yeah, yes, sir.
That's part of the contract. That's to develop a plan for the proposed radio system.
Exactly.
That's to give council an option, not for this contract.
Exactly. Then I'm seeing the third bullet point, and that's what you say, we're giving them the authority to take a look at grants, to actually avidly apply for the grants.
Correct.
We're paying them to apply for these grants.
Yes.
And ones, I mean, in your opinion, taking this outside vendor to do this task, do you see them, do you see MCM having better access to just grant opportunities out there that are just not on our radar whatsoever?
They'll dedicate a grant writer, they have extensive experience in this field, especially in Erie County. They just did an exact project with them, P-25 digital trunked radio system. Erie County is Home Rule. MCM has been involved with Luzern County since I've been at 911 for many years. They're very well experienced with our system and our needs. So they've been successful with grants. They'll dedicate over 3,000 hours through this project of dedicated consulting services.
How about demonstrated results? Have we seen them get a certain percentage of the total cost of these projects, specifically in Erie County? Have they achieved like 50% grant funding, or...
I don't want to speak on performance-based. This contract is not performance-based for grant funding. They're just committing grant writers and known success in obtaining grants, assistance to firefighter grants, LSA grant money. But that's what this contract entails as well.
You know, I support 911 100%. The funding, alternatively, we've been talking about this for probably about two years, close to that, Miss Hough talked about a wish list for capital funds, a big wish that we have here. And I know this doesn't necessarily encumber $20 million or so has been the estimate of general funds just yet, but I just want to make sure, should we approve this, that we're going to have really high hopes of securing outside funding? And I guess that's what I'm asking about the, not necessarily performance-based, but I'd like to see action first, so that I can give my thumbs up on something like this.
Well, this has to happen before we have action, because the county is driving this project. We have to get an RFP or bid on the street, so all these local municipalities and agencies committed for LSA funding, without us knowing what kind of system we're going to put in, there's really no reason they should put in for grant funding. If they don't put in for the proper equipment, and they get the grant funding, and it's not compatible with the system that we're proposing, there's no use putting in for that. So we're kind of putting the cart before the horse. This has to happen. We have to get a bid on the street. We have to get past this hurdle before the COGS and all of these fire departments, police departments, EMS agencies could start putting in for LSA grant funding. Hazelton area county manager and I were discussing this morning, they put in for an LSA grant for about $1 million. So if they're successful for end mobile, mobile and portable equipment, that'll knock a million dollars off this overall project if they're successful. We won't have to fund that.
That wasn't LSA money. I think that was the firefighters' fund.
I'm sorry, the assistance to firefighters grant. I was thinking of our LSA.
Mr. Rosa, why don't you inform council what you'll be doing next week with regard to the LSA?
Yeah, and first of all, before you do that, very helpful, Fred, thanks for that. That answers, appreciate that. But go ahead.
Just to segue into the LSA grant application, I'm going to be going in front of the Rural Development Authority next week on the 20th. And the county is eligible to put in through the Rural Development Office, or the Redevelopment Office, I'm sorry, for infrastructure only, not for end-user mobile and portable equipment. So with that, we're putting in a million-dollar application for tower site infrastructure that's going to be required as well through this project. So hopefully we're successful on that.
So I would, you know, once Mr. Rosa Krantz does that through the Redevelopment Authority, if the Redevelopment Authority approves it, I'll be informing county council. I would ask county council for their advocacy to reach out to the state legislators and state representatives to make sure that that moves to the top of their list for LSA funding. We're talking about a million dollars that can come to Luzern County that will help us with this project. It goes specifically for infrastructure, it goes to tower sites. This is something that we need and will be here for generations. So this is something that we haven't, we only were successful in one LSA grant in my time here. That was for about $180,000 for the rotunda, which was approved, which was gratefully accepted. But, you know, we've been shot down a couple other times. So if any county council member, once that information's out there, could support us through their senators and state legislature, would be very helpful. Thank you.
Any other questions, Miss Hough?
Yeah. So just to be clear, this is not, this proposal here is just to pay for someone to help us plan the project? This money has nothing to do with the actual project itself?
Correct.
Okay. So we're looking at close to $400,000 just to pay someone to plan the project?
Less than 2% for a $20 million project.
I get it. I kind of thought when we were going to plan this project, I thought that you'd be doing a lot of it, and I might have been too optimistic. I want a faith in you, Mr. Rosa Krantz.
I know what I don't know, Miss Hough.
And that's a good thing.
I'm not an expert in digital radio.
Right.
I don't think you could afford me if I was.
I guess my question is this. I know that they say they did a project for Erie County, and you mentioned that, there's more than two counties in the state, and they all have to be facing the same thing that we are. So what's happening in the rest of those counties?
A lot of them have moved forward. South of us, Schoolkill County purchased their own digital radio system for about $30 million. Bucks County has purchased their own for about $60 million many years ago. Erie County purchased their own for about $26 million, I believe.
Okay, and how did they plan those projects? Who did those?
MCM did Erie County. They have a professional consultant.
Well, I know that, I'm saying, but what about the rest of the counties in the state? Did anybody do their own internal planning for this project?
To my knowledge, no. It's industry standard to have a consultant manage these. It's such a huge project.
Okay.
For me to manage the daily operations of 911.
And that's my question. So who managed the project in Schoolkill? Who managed the project in, you know, any of those others?
Other consultant firms.
Okay. And this is the only response we got?
Yes, I got six questions from six firms. I believe it's such an aggressive schedule, being a 12-month term contract, that no other vendor, not knowing our system, to come in and do this would be very hard-pressed to do it for that price.
Okay.
That's just my professional opinion.
Okay. Thank you.
Question.
You said, I'm looking at page 10, which is 33 of 177. Total cost is $380,000. You're going to pay $114 you have available, and you're looking for $266. And you said you didn't know where it was going to come from, whether it was going to come from reserve money, general fund money. Question is, if we vote on this next week, then we're committed to providing this money next year. That's number one. And number two, did you make this a budget submission to Mr. Pedri? And is it in his current budget right now that we're going to be working on?
No.
Yeah, he did.
I did originally.
He did originally put it into the budget. We decided to take it out, because it's a capital improvement as opposed to a general fund side of things. If council would like to see it in the general fund, we can obviously amend the budget.
Well, I mean, the money's got to come from somewhere. If, once council votes on this, then they said it's okay for you to spend the money. Now it's up to council to come up with the money.
Correct.
So that's the question. I mean, I don't want to vote on anything unless you're going to tell me where the money's going to come from.
It's really up to county council where you want to take it from.
Well, it's not...
So you can take it from the capital fund, you can take it from the reserve, or you can take it from the general fund?
Yeah, but here again, is this on the list in the capital? Is this like another thing off the wish list that we don't...
This has been, this has been on the wish list for five years, Miss Hough.
I know, but, no. What I'm saying is, it's not, it wasn't on the list of capital projects.
It's listed under 800.21 in the capital project.
Okay, all right.
As the countywide radio system project.
And is it funded?
Is this, this piece of it, though, this consulting?
We have $850,000 funded. That's why I said this is either going to be an amendment to that 800.21, which is hard-programmed into the capital fund, or council may wish to use reserve funding or build it into the general fund to be expensed from there.
Okay. But my question was about the capital projects list. Is this, the consulting piece of it, the planning piece of it, is that built into it?
Consulting.
Or is it just the project itself?
Well, the radio project is multi-phased.
Okay, so you're considering this part of it?
So there's consulting, there's infrastructure, yes.
Okay.
800.21.
All right. Thank you.
Anyone else with questions, Mr. Rosa Krantz?
I just, if you have time and you could put down some speaking points that you'd like us, Harry and I are on the legislative committee, and certainly we would get in touch with the legislators to kind of ask them to push this grant through, what you're proposing to the Redevelopment Authority.
Certainly.
Okay, so, Harry, do you have...
I believe it mentions the legislative...
And we have spoke about that before with the folks we met with, too.
Yeah.
But obviously, we're moving forward. Should we, for council purposes?
I believe it's Senator Baker, Senator Boback, the Back Mountain representative. Because it's in that region, it's Harris Pond Road, proposed tower site in Dallas, tower site.
Fred, do you know, are you done, Sheila? You need more?
No, no, I wanted to make sure it was okay with you.
Yeah, oh, absolutely. But a follow-up question, Sheila's asking about, you know, we spoke with Representative Boback, and she talked about the Next Gen 911 federal register funds that were not dispersed, but opened up in August. Does that apply to this?
Yeah, that comes from the state, that has nothing to do with this.
That can't fund this whatsoever?
No.
Okay. All right, she thought that might have been an outlet.
I wish it was, but no.
Wishful thinking, as always.
Unfortunately, like I've said it many times before, it seems like every time we put in for a grant, or the door slams on us. You know, typically, the county isn't eligible unless it's infrastructure. And that's why we're applying for the LSA grant. We also put in for the art grant funding through the NEPA Alliance for $150,000. And I was informed again that we're on the short list, hopefully. So I don't know, I don't know if we'll be successful, but any little bit helps through this process.
So the...
Very good, thank you.
The 800.21 project allocates $850,000, and that was in 2017?
Yes.
Is that money still allocated? That's still earmarked specifically for this project?
Yes, yes. And approximately $500 and some thousand has already been used out of that line item.
$500?
$500-plus thousand has been used out of there, expended for tower site infrastructure, radio upgrades.
According to this, there's only $56,000 that's been used.
I disagree with that.
I think there's been some money that's been...
It might be encumbered.
Encumbered.
But I can tell you that invoiced is over $500,000.
Okay, but the balance?
There should be about $300 and some thousand.
So the balance?
But those funds are encumbered, so that's probably why that balance is $50-some-thousand.
Okay, so is this the money that you're saying that we could use for this, or are you saying that we still have to allocate?
No, I'm saying, I'm saying we probably have to do an amendment to that if council chooses to use capital reserve funding. They'll have to do an amendment to that line item, is what I'm saying.
Okay.
I don't have the authority to do that under the charter.
Okay, so...
So if you're going to use capital funding, you're going to have to do an amendment to that and find funding within the capital projects fund to fund that $266,000 if council chooses.
In addition to the $850,000 that's listed here, you're going to need another $240,000? Is that it?
Either from there, or from the general fund, or...
From this $850,000 line item?
No. This, no. All I'm saying is, that was programmed there for the radio project. You asked if I had the radio project hardcoded somewhere, and I answered you, it's under 800.21. $850,000 was allocated.
Right.
I need another $266,000 for this project, for this consulting service.
In addition to the $850,000.
In addition to the $850,000.
That was the question, yes.
Okay.
Okay, so this $850,000...
Just wanted to make sure we're on the same page.
Doesn't account for the extra $266,000 that you need?
Correct.
Okay. And we don't have another $200,000 left in this...
I think there's about $200,000, something in that neighborhood.
Yep.
Okay.
I'm not saying you have to use the capital.
No, what you're saying is, we had money in the capital budget. $500-plus thousand has been expended, so there's about $300,000, but lots of that is already encumbered.
Encumbered, yes.
So you probably have $50,000 or something like that.
And that's where I think that number is there as well.
So it comes down to the fact, do you want this project done? Do you need to have a consultant? Here's the contract that would cost for the consultant to do the planning and put the project together, correct?
Correct. I'm looking to work with council to find the allocation for the line item where we want to pay it out of.
Well, the manager should find the money first, and then come to us and tell us you've got it in the general fund right now.
Well, the manager can come with recommendations, but the council has to make the decision.
If council wishes, we could discuss it during my budget presentation as well, you know, that's your wishes.
I'm sure we will.
I'm sure it'll come up again.
Sure we will.
I just get, you know, I just realized that when you vote on something, you got to pay for it. You didn't have a way to pay for it. So you're going to ask us next week to vote for this, but no money to pay for it. Then we're going to have to come up with the money to pay for it.
And two weeks will be...
Two weeks.
And you're right, we have to know the funding for the project.
A lot of the time, you just give money away, and at the end of the year, you want a tax increase. That's got to stop.
To piggyback on what Mr. Urban's talking about, Mr. Chair, I'm looking at page 50 of 177, council members, and it's the, under special provisions, section, section 4D payment.
payment. And I think I'm answering my own question, Ms. Rosa-Prance, but you talked about how the 266,000 will become due at the end of the year, next year, and the 114,000. I think that breaks down to 30%, it looks like.
Correct.
So that'll be billed over 11 months.
You're looking at the RFP that was released. The actual contract where it specifies those payments is on page 33 of 177 of the agenda, where it specifies the 11 months to be invoiced equally by MCM, 114,000, so it's 10,373 a month, and the final remaining balance. And they were gracious enough to unload it. So I guess you could kind of call it a performance-based contract, where they're going to expend all the time and effort and hope to be paid on the 12th month, so.
I think we're good for it. Yeah, thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Number three, discussion regarding resolution designating the county manager as agent for purposes of hazard mitigation grant program.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, and good evening, Council. This resolution would give Mr. Pedry, our county manager, authorization to execute any and all documents pertaining to the hazard mitigation grant program. As you probably are aware, any post-disaster mitigation funding that we receive, in order to be eligible to receive that, we need to have a hazard mitigation plan in place. Part of the process through PMA is that that plan be reviewed and reapproved, if you will, on a five-year cycle. The last plan was approved, I believe it was September 23rd. It was done late, but it was approved September 23rd of 2015. And the next update is due, technically, it's due in September, but we are targeting the end of 2019 to have that completed. The process involves, as the previous resolution, hiring a consultant who specializes in hazard mitigation planning to review and provide updates that are needed in accordance with regulations. So part of that process would be trying to get funding in order to pay for the consulting to have that plan updated. The hazard mitigation, the hazard mitigation grant program is funding that comes from the federal government, and it is administered through PMA. We need to, we've already secured a grant. The grant is stated as being a $75,000 grant. However, there's a $25,000 match that is required by Luzern County in cash or in-kind services. So technically, we are already, have been approved for $56,250. So we are in the process of trying to finalize that grant, and in order to do so, there are several documents that need to be executed, and this would give Mr. Pedry, our county manager, authorization to complete those and execute those documents on behalf of the county.
Questions for Mr. O'Neil? Obviously, this is an important, very important plan, because if we have a problem, disasters, and we don't have this plan in place and approved, we would not be eligible for funds. Am I correct?
And we have seen many more of those.
In fact, when this was approved, the last time, that was a big question that came up at that point.
Correct. That is correct.
So it's something that I think it's in the best interest of the county and our residents.
Who has the authority to sign off on it now?
There is no one. This resolution is required by the state to have a designated agent for the county.
What is it? So the state just requires a designated agent?
They, yes.
And who signed off on these in the past?
The county manager was a designated agent during the last renewal, an update.
Prior to Home Rule, who signed off on it?
Uh, that was... Mr. Lawton, I believe in 2014, that might have been, the grant application may have been actually 2014.
Prior to Home Rule, who signed off on it?
Yes, it was, I would say it was definitely under Home Rule. That's correct.
Before Home Rule. You know who signed off on these?
I do not. I do not have that information.
Some things require the governing body to sign off on it, and other people require the administrator to sign off on it.
We've had some conversations with the PMA administrator who handles this program. Personally object to it. I would just following practice in what was conducted during the last application.
Any questions for Mr. O'Neil?
I just want to add that the county appoints a hazard mitigation officer.
If you want to talk, would you please come to the microphone? Otherwise, people may not be able to hear you, and there is a...
The county appoints a hazard mitigation officer. It went, it was always under the Planning and Zoning Office. So it went back to Adrian Maroli and Jim Brazina back in those times. So we will have a hazard mitigation officer. I'm not going to speak for anybody, but typically, it was under Planning and Zoning. We did wait to send one form to the state until we got the new hire, so that he could be the hazard mitigation officer.
Thank you.
So typically, the hazard mitigation officer signs off on these?
The county could pick the designee to sign off on certain grants. Mr. Pedry is the designee, but if he wanted to be the hazard mitigation officer, it can be.
Any other questions? Thank you. Moving number four, discussion regarding resolution authorizing county manager to execute a lease agreement. Luzern County Wyoming County's area agency on aging in the Butler Township for the Butler Township active adult senior citizen. Sit there.
I can cover that.
Okay.
The previous contract is coming to an end, and this is a renewal. The Butler Township has been occupied since, I believe, 2013, and there are no funds coming out of the general fund. But budget, it is paid through the aging block grant.
And the cotton, the lease agreement, Sarah, for your review?
Yes.
Questions?
For the public's review, is there an increase in the cost?
I believe so. I don't know the exact amount.
It's 2%.
But it's minimal.
It's 2% a year.
2% a year.
Thank you. Moving down to number five, discussion regarding resolution authorizing county manager to execute a lease agreement between Luzern County, Chicxuln Burro from premises located 35 West Union Street, Chicxuln. And this is for the magistrate's office as currently housed there.
I did invite representatives from the court administration to be here. They couldn't be here tonight. They've indicated to me that this magistrate's office is approved by the AOPC. The magistrate has been in this location since 2009. The rent, beginning in January of 2009, was $2,000 a month, and as of January 2013, it was $2,163 per month. It's a slight increase as to the amount of the rent for this particular magistrate's office.
And is it, I'm just thinking, on page 148, there's a typo. It's not, Pittston City is not involved, correct?
No.
Chicxuln Burro.
No, that'll be corrected. There were a lot of different versions going back and
Just one comment. This is just a general comment for council. You know, as these rents go up, no matter whether they go up 2% or whatever, for the magistrate's offices, you get a fixed amount of money from AOPC every year, and that money's gone down continuously since 2000. So as rents go up to these municipalities, there's more money that's going to come out of the general fund to pay for the magistrate's staffs. So just keep that in mind when you're out there negotiating these contracts and approving these contracts.
Anyone else in regards to magistrate lease?
It looks like, I mean, it's a $500 increase over 10 years, so we're looking at a 20% increase over 10 years, if my math is right.
It goes back to 2009, I think, right?
Correct. Originally, it was 2009.
Right, originally 2009, when we first rented the property. And then I'm seeing here, I don't know if we have those figures too, but, that sounds kind of nice. I don't know...
Well, I can remember back in November 2011, Mr. Urban, that was one of the things that the commissioners did in 2011, is that they were going to move the magistrate's office. And Chicxuln Burro officials came to a meeting and pleaded to maintain the office. And I believe the commissioners said, yes, we will abide by that and maintain the office there, correct? Well, it was right after the flood, 2011, and they were having trouble getting their building back in shape to allow the premises to be used.
Yep. But the real issue is, is that if the state doesn't want to cough up any more money, the county's going to have to come up with more money every year to pay for this. So you have an option, go back to the state and ask AOPC to give you the additional funds, because rents have gone up, and I don't see anybody going back there and asking for that. Or number two, getting your legislators to change the law, maybe to require the municipalities to kick in a little bit toward the rent. After all, they're getting a piece of the revenue from the fines and the fees and everything along with us. They're getting paid, but they have no expense as far as staff or building. All that comes onto the county. And I think that's totally unfair, unfair on part of the state to tack that entire cost onto the county.
Save it?
Yeah, I just want to respond to Mr. Urban. You have mentioned in the last few weeks several times that we should go to the legislature.
Right.
If I recall correctly, you are on the legislative committee.
That's right.
And you have not come to one meeting this year and brought these issues up that we put in back.
I'm not going to either.
And you aren't going to, right?
I'm not going to. You know why I'm not going to? Because we had a nice meeting last year with the legislators. And one of the things that they said was to put these things in writing and send them down to them.
Well, it's legislative, and you could be the one who put it in writing.
Wait, 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 no, I'm not, no, you have solicitors that can do that. I'm not going to sit down and write legislation, amending legislation, and reviewing legislation when you've got 10 or 12 county solicitors that could be doing it. You know, you can go, as a member, and make those recommendations to the county solicitor. You're a lawyer. You know the law. You can review the law in your spare time and look up the law and make the changes, like I just mentioned. Make the changes to the legislature and say, please pass these along to the Senate and to the House, and ask them to change the laws. That's all. You don't have to do it. And I mentioned that when all those legislators were sitting here in the room, that fell on deaf ears. And I said, if nobody wants to follow up on it, I'm not going to come in any meetings and waste my time just talking. You know, we have solicitors in this county that are paid, and they're supposed to work for both the legislative and executive branches of government.
But we aren't talking about the legislative branch. We're talking about our legislative branch.
No, no. We're part of the legislative branch of government, whether we're on the legislative committee or not on the legislative committee. And those solicitors work for us.
On the legislative committee, you could be putting in writing certain things...
I'm not putting anything in writing. I made the recommendations.
Okay.
And you don't want to put them in writing. I'm not going to do your work for you.
Mr. Urban, if you have a list of legislation that you want my office to review and potentially write amendments to legislation and send it to Harrisburg, please pass it on.
I just said today, just now.
I'll do the...
So what do you want me to do? You want me to go to the law, write up the amendment, and give it to you?
No, I want you to give me what issues.
I just said an issue right now.
And I have it written down.
Funding is an issue. That's an issue, okay.
Mr. Urban, give me, if, give me the list.
That's an issue. Funding is an issue, number one. AOPC funding has always been an issue. It's gone down since 2000, since I was a commissioner. Every year, it goes down. And I just said, we're putting the bill for increased rent, we're putting the bill for increased costs, as collective bargaining agreements, give money, additional monies to people. But we're not getting any more. And the taxpayers of this county are paying more and more of that money. Whereas, all the municipalities get a piece of the fee that comes out of the legislation, and they aren't paying for anything.
We'll work on the AOPC issue. If you have any other issues.
That's, that's a big issue.
Mr. Urban, I, please, I welcome it.
That's a big issue.
Anyone else?
But I think, not to keep on beating this issue to death, but last year, they did not cut judicial funds, but they did in the prior year.
Right.
$250,000, quarter of a million dollars. We've talked to our representatives. They know exactly where we stand. And I would like to see them come unify our dozen or so folks we have in the Northeast. Go to Harrisburg, take the mantle, that we need some help here. We need to stop having unfunded mandates across the board. Steve, you're right. I mean, the judiciary is just one aspect of it. And I think what the general public doesn't realize is that our job is twice as hard, because we have to know what the state statute says, as well as what we need to do here on the county. General Assembly can just pass wherever they want. It just rolls downhill. We know that. So, you know, they do need to hear from you. They need to hear from all of us and the folks out there, because it's a giant bite of the apple to take to have fun county government. And again, there are all the glories in Harrisburg, but we've got to do a lot of extra work here. I mean, the work of two people, two positions.
You're correct with the mandates. And the election machines are another one.
Yes, they are.
And we'll talk about that.
They want election machines with a paper trail on it, then they're going to have to pay for it.
They don't. The general assembly don't offer that.
How hard is it to write up a change to the election law mandating that Harrisburg pay for it?
You're right. Probably have to put that one down, too.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Going back to number six, which is the financial supervision. Ms. How?
Sure. So, you know, based on, first of all, the children you thought it, which, you know, has its own financial personnel in that office. And then last week, at the discussion about judicial services, we found out that they added financial personnel to that office. If you look at the charter, the Home Rule Charter, section 512 and 513, it does talk about the control of the money in the county being under the supervision of budget and finance. And also, in the administrative code, if you look at Article 6, section 6.02, which deals with the Office of Budget and Finance, section D10, it says, exercise financial, this is one of the responsibilities of the Office of Budget and Finance. The office exercises financial budgetary control over each of the agency's boards, commissions, departments, and offices of the county. So when you look at what happens in this county with money, you know, there's money in different agencies, different departments, and I can see where it would be helpful, say, for a human service agency, to have a specialist in that department to look at the money and follow the trail of money. My concern is that I think that each of those places, wherever you have a financial officer or fiscal personnel in any of the agencies, any of the departments, they actually all need to report back to the Office of Budget and Finance, to be compliant with the administrative code, to be compliant with the charter, to be compliant with the whole idea that we're not individual little kingdoms, but that all of the money in the county is being supervised in one place, and they're reporting back. In the same way that the sheriff's office now manages security, and they provide security, say, to children and youth, they provide security officers, but they are supervised back at the Office of the Sheriff, in the same way, all of the financial operations should be supervised in one place in the county, and that would be by the Office of Budget and Finance. Where the person works is not material. So you can have somebody who's a financial officer in the children and youth office, in the human services office. You can have someone who's a financial officer in the judicial records department, or any of those departments, but the person who supervises them and where they report to, that that person should be the director of budget and finance. I mean, I don't know how we make that happen. I would like, I will draft a resolution for someone to review if we need to, or maybe we could just have a discussion about whether we can just move those personnel in terms of your hierarchy and your, you know, your roadmap for your departments, under the supervision of budget and finance.
So let me just, what you're saying is that if there's a fiscal personnel in children and youth, and they had talked about that last week, fiscal personnel in EMA or whatever, they will all report to Brian Swets?
They all ultimately should fall under the umbrella of budget and finance.
Budget and finance.
And they might be the specialist for that department, and that's fine. They can be specialized in the, you know, the Act 148 money and, you know, anything else that comes into any individual department or division, but where they report back to ultimately is budget and finance, because that's where the supervision of all the money should go. And I think that letting people manage their own money in those offices, we're harkening back to the days of the old offices, where everybody had their own money, and everybody had control of their own money, and nobody quite knew exactly what was going on in any of those pots of money. And that was not the, that's not the idea of Home Rule. The idea of Home Rule was to bring everything under one, you know, to simplify the supervision of funds, and actually to manage the funds a little bit better. And I think that it would help somebody who's maybe working on one of those agencies, if they run into problems, to know that they have a supervisor that's not a human services professional, but a financial person, that they can go to and say, hey, you know what? I need help. I don't know how to do this report, or I don't know how to do this, or, you know, there's a discrepancy here that I can't account for. And then you have financial personnel working on the same issue. Even though that person might work day in and day out in one department, the person that they would report back to, and that they would have a network of support, would be in the Office of Budget and Finance, where there would be other financial professionals working.
If I may, Mr. Chair?
Anyone else before manager replies? Go ahead.
No, I'm interested in this. I think it's something worth looking at. I have to review it with Brian Swets, who's not here tonight. But I think I want, we'll take a look at. We've instituted a similar policy in human services. Under Lynn Hill is now reporting Adam Weinritz, who is the, who is the fiscal director of human services. If you see through the budget, through the position budget that we inform county council of, we've taken the financial people out of those departments and put them under Brian, and put them under Adam in the human services. That way, that those individuals don't report to the department head, they report to specifically the budget and finance person in human services from there.
And then that, but as Linda's saying, that that human services...
Adam.
...will then ultimately report to Brian.
And I understand, I understand. And, you know, we are, they do work very closely together, but I think we're talking about what's the perpetuity of the government, because like, right now, the administration works very well with everybody, but where do you go from here? At the end of the day, everybody works for the county manager, so I can just assign where we want to be across the board. And I'm not sure, I mean, in terms of, I guess I won't have to change the position. I'm talking out loud here in a public meeting.
Yeah, you would have to change the position.
Change the position budget, to move everybody into there, and then direct bill back.
Right, exactly. Just like you do with the human services.
Or I could just have them, I mean, can't I just have like, kind of like a direct line? I think with my own, well, I could take a review of that with the solicitor's office. Listen, I'm interested in it. It may be worthwhile. We've already started this already within human services, to make, move the financial people out of the departments and up to the division level. I mean, something worth looking at. I'll talk to Brian about it, and then we'll go from there.
Okay.
If I could too, Mr. Chair, there was, at the beginning of Home Rule, there was a hierarchy chart of all the different division heads, department heads, and everything. Maybe it would be helpful, Mr. Pedry, to reevaluate that, bring that up to the present, because I know there have been changes over the past few years, just with organization altogether.
Sure.
Might be helpful for us to make policy.
Yeah, it's on the website. The new, the updated organization chart is on the website.
Well, that would also help us in working towards the revision of the administrative code, because we're still waiting for the department and division breakdowns.
Thanks for your proactiveness, Mr. Chair.
I haven't received any, I haven't received any changes. That's the holdup, because we have very little to go on the administrative code until we get that information. That's the major part of what needs to be amended.
I sent an email to all the department heads and division heads, and I haven't received any suggested changes. I do, however, just generally, just briefly going over the administrative code right now, we will have to amend certain portions if we want to shift over to budget and finance, because certain division heads are given the authority to review annual plans and budget estimates. We would have to go through each division to...
No, but it doesn't mean that they, it doesn't mean that they have financial personnel in that department who only answer to them. And I think you need to go back to where the division...
Then that would have to change, that we would have to change the administrative code, and we would have to change that.
Well, that's, we're in the process of trying to do that.
No, I mentioned it, and I think it's worth, I think it's worth reviewing to see the situations. I mean, listen, at the end of the day, I could just say you're working with this person, and this person goes from here. That that could be an opportunity that I can do as county manager, and that can be a clear, clear line. county manager, and that can be a clear, clear line. I mean, during the audit process, I did kind of put Brian Sudo in charge of a lot of the process of following through from that side of things. And I think with Adam in that position in human services, you're going to see a big difference from human services, especially with the realignment of those positions.